I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right to justice for all.
Call the meeting to order for regular session for Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. School Board Recognition Month.
Well, it is that time of year, or January is School Board Recognition Month to basically honor you for the your volunteerism and the great things you do for our school districts. As always, the Governor has sent out an official proclamation that I will read to you. Tandy, I thank Tandy for providing you the lovely gift bags and from my perspective and point of view and everything, thanks for being with you for Lake County School District. I much appreciate that as well. So here goes official proclamation, State of Oregon Proclamation, Office of the Governor. Whereas access to high quality public education gives every Oregon student the opportunity for lifelong success, contributing to Oregon's quality of life and economic prosperity. And whereas, every student can learn and succeed, especially when given the opportunities they deserve to develop the knowledge and skills to achieve their full potential. And whereas, Oregon's education system has the mission of fully welcoming every student with every background across our diverse state, supporting their learning and development. Whereas, the leadership of locally elected school boards in close partnership with educators, students, families, and communities they serve fosters the engagement, care, and resiliency that leads to equitable achievement for all students. Whereas, board members are critical when establishing the inclusive expectations culture, conditions that allow for quality teaching and learning. And whereas, the committed people who serve on the boards of Oregon's 197 school districts, 19 education service districts, 17 community colleges deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of students in Oregon. Now therefore, and Governor Kate Brown of the State of Oregon hereby proclaims on January 2020 to be School Board Recognition Month. So what this we're up, I heron to set my hand on the great seal of the State of Oregon to be affixed down at the Capitol, City of Salem, State of Oregon, on the day of December 19, 2019. So, once again, many thanks board for the great work that you do.
You will.
And everybody else, give the board a round of applause.
All right. Approval amendment of meeting agenda items.
Um, I have no other approval, excuse me, no other amendments to be.
Oh, we have a late item. Sorry, it's gonna be, um, under 8.1, I have a second proposal that came in this afternoon or early this morning.
Okay, thank you.
It should be a hard copy of this.
All right, there you go, as amendments. Motion?
I motion that we approve or amend in the end or in the school board meeting agenda for January 8th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the amended board meeting agenda items for January 8th, 2020 as presented. Hold favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes?
Moved to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018 as presented.
It's removed and seconded to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018 as presented. Hold favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Correspondents?
None.
Public comment?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna read a quick statement here real quick. Members of the public who wish to address the Board of Education should notify the superintendent or board chairman prior to the meeting. The school board normally accepts public comment only at its regularly scheduled meetings. Public comment is not normally accepted at special meetings or work sessions. School board welcomes participation in each board meeting. Individuals addressing the board are asked to provide written summaries if possible, thank you, limit comments to three minutes, and announce your name before speaking. Be courteous of others and follow board established procedures for the meeting. Notification is giving to, is given to speakers that meetings may be recorded. Mr. Gonzalez, uh, do you have intent to speak?
Yeah, Orlando Gonzalez, from Lakeview. I said a couple of things, I want to bring for the board, uh, real quick. One of them was, uh, it's been going on for years, so it's probably not a real concern. But I live over there, I live on, uh, Western Place, and I drive out on Ford Street, onto, I guess it's High Street or whatever, anyway, where the kids walk between, uh, the high school and the grade school. And, uh, usually when we get a lot of snow in there, I notice that the kids are, uh, having a walk on quite a bit of snow, there's a little path. And then sometimes when they plow, they throw a big pile on both sides of the street. You know, right there with the intersection, and the kids have to climb over this big mound both ways. I've seen teachers have to do that also, going back and forth between classes. And, you know, fortunately, we haven't had anyone fall down and bump their head or whatever, but, uh, and then I know some of the folks there are good folks, but maybe because, you know, school starts early, they can't get out there soon enough where all the kids tap everything down, because, you know, it's hard to shovel snow. But anyway, just a concern of mine, that maybe there's something the school district is doing. I know they plow at the high school, they plow on the, somehow, they plow the sidewalks and stuff, but in there, there's a little corridor with a...
Western Place and where?
What's that?
Where, where's the snow berm again?
Right there at the intersection of what Ford Street meets that street, is that High Street there? Right in front of the grade school.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you throw it there, and, you know, it gets to be a big pile, the kids have to climb over. You can't get in the street, because, you know, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
So anyways, but it's been going on for years, so maybe it's not a problem, but it's kind of a concern.
Thank you.
You know, I gotta stay back from them, so I don't run over anyone and make sight now or whatever.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I wanted to bring that to your folks' attention. Uh, the other thing was, uh, a couple of weeks ago, this magazine came to my attention. And I grabbed it and I said, "What is this? Teaching tolerance." I don't know if you folks have seen this magazine or not.
I'm getting some notes.
I started, I started glancing through it, and basically, you know, I know one other thing that's been coming up in the community is teaching tolerance at the schools. And, uh, so what I've done is I made copies of some of the pages in there, and there's a page in there that covers the, you know, how you can get the subscription. So I made copies for each of you, and it's not the whole magazine, but it seemed like it had a lot of the topics in there. If you look on one item, real quick, let me look at that. Second page, there's a thing, and it says, uh, "Bring social justice to your classroom, try our film kits," and have different topics there. Selma, The Bridge to the Valid, One Survivor Remembers, Eva la Casa, Casa, The Time for Justice, The Children's March, Bully, An Outrage, and down below, it says, these are little films and teaching packets, it's free to educators. Order online. So, I kind of just bring that to your attention in case you folks hadn't seen it, I didn't really see it, so. Some of them go over the publication, but I want to share with the teachers.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Reports.
Well, I'm gonna start off with me, I'm gonna give you the latest update on the student investment account, which is a part of the Student Success Act. Moving in here, the timeline in your board package should be on page eight. And, uh, to date, you know, I went to a state meeting back on December 4th. They said that we'd be rolling out the SSA, SIA application on December 16th. Mr. Thompson, you can chime in anytime you want to here too, but as, as of today, there still is no application. So, I don't know when they're going to get it to us, they initially said a due date of March 15th. I don't know what the, the latest, the application, if the due date's gonna be pushed out. We have some work to do before we fill out that application. So I developed this calendar to go ahead and coincide with that work. I'm gonna roll out a couple of school surveys that were provided to me by Mr. Thompson, you know, that all of Lake County is using. It's going to be a survey that's gonna focus on the criteria that's involved with the Student Investment Act, particularly to poverty, uh, race, uh, diversity, students with disability, bilingual students, uh, and other student groups that historically experienced academic disparities. Though there'll be some questions in regard to those bullet points here on the paper. I remind you, specific areas as mandated by ODE for refunding, in this particular case, those bullet points have to somehow correlate with items 1 through 4, to reduce class size, instructional time, health and safety, and law-related education. I think the last time I spoke with you, uh, you know, we're seeing an increase in class size in the elementary, so I'm probably gonna put a lot of eggs into that basket, you know, for class size reduction. So anyway, January 9th, as I, you know, digressed here, we're gonna roll out that survey, January 21st, we're gonna go ahead and put out a meeting, uh, through, uh, through a school messenger, survey out through school messenger. Uh, on the 27th, our team will convene to survey the data and also the public comment to identify specific needs and setting goals for the SIA. And then sometime during March 20th, or excuse me, January 27th, March 8th, we'll begin the grant writing process. Hopefully, they'll have the application out and we can move to that. Jack, anything to add that I might have missed?
Still no application.
Okay.
I don't know.
I'll let Jack chime in on this. Part of the SIA, they, they allocated $30,000 to ESD to hire kind of a intermediary person between our districts and ODE, you wanna talk about that real quick?
Yeah, we've hired Elena Bradbury on a part-time basis, and she will be our SIA liaison. She'll be the direct contact with ODE, um, so any district in the county that, any superintendents or whoever's working on this whole thing. Uh, anybody that has any questions or anything like that, she is gonna be our resident expert. Um, and she will have, you know, direct contact with ODE and be able to help everybody with their applications and that kind of stuff, so, um, she's not quite sure what her job is yet, because we don't know what this whole thing entails. Um, but she's gonna, she's, that's gonna be her sole purpose and her sole focus, so, um, and she's a very, uh, very intelligent person, so I'm pleased to have her and pleased that she'll be able to help the districts out, so.
I'm gonna be reaching out to Elena real soon to go ahead and integrate her into District 7 as far as our wants and needs will be, and as far as what we need to gather, as far as data, in order to fulfill the requirements of this grant. Again, I remind you, at the ADM, we have an ADMW, the potential for us is around $600,000. Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a report?
We're gonna hope that this works this time. Hi, hi, oh, okay. Think I was doing that when you were there, hi. Okay, so, um, this is month, uh, through month ending of November 30th. So, we'll get it up here where I can see it. Actual year-to-date revenues, um, we projected about 56%, we're at 52%, uh, pretty close. Our local resources, um, we projected about 76.5, we're currently at 64.8. That's our property taxes. We are a little bit, um, lacking this year compared to previous years. We're usually, um, like a 90% collection in November with the property taxes. And I noticed a little bit last year, but I kind of really noticed it this year, that it's backed off a little bit. Um, so it's coming eventually later, hopefully. And so then our state sources, which we're pretty close to being right on, which is, um, our state school fund, 49% versus, um, the 50% that we've collected, um, so that, that one's easier to judge on. Coming down, so 2.6 million, um, of unrestricted grants is your common school fund and your, um, state school fund. Your taxes, we currently are, have collected, uh, 2.1 million. The tuition, again, that's from the prior year, um, from LODAC. And moving on down, um, interest on investments at 21,955, that's the, um, interest that we gain at the, um, LGIP, uh, level. And, um, penalties and interest on taxes at 16,894, which is what we also get from the county. Recovery from prior year expenditures, that's 16,000. We recently got in, um, at the end of October, which, we didn't have an October report, we kind of missed that with all of our missed meetings there, um, there was 8,292 of a safe dividend, um, that we collected, which is part of that 16,000 on there. Um, so these are kind of just the top, uh, collections, um, that we received. Go down. And, so our budget is this bright blue, um, that's our whole budget for the whole year. The green is our, of course, our projected year-to-date, and of course, the purple is our current year-to-date. So we're not too far off from what we've projected partially through the year. Moving over to our expenditure side. Um, projected year-to-date expenditures, we, uh, were at 30, 30%, excuse me, currently we are at 28.6%. Um, salaries were pretty right on, 31 projected, and we're at 30% through November 30th. All other objects, so our consumables, our durable's within the, um, general fund, 29% projected, and we're a little bit lower at 27%, so that's actually a good thing, it's not bad. Coming through here, um, for the most part, the, for what we've got in here is mostly our salaries. It is our primary, um, spent expenditures. Um, textbooks, I believe, we talked about that, that we had to increase that, um, to the 57,000 here in the last October. Uh, we paid that bill as we had to order more books, um, for a class that, that we missed, um, that math class. Um, so that, that was a bump, but I think we're still in good shape. Computer hardware, of course, they've been buying computers right and left, so they've had a budget for it, so that's great. Perfect. Um, again, down through here, this is our budget, um, for the general fund for the full year. And our expenditures, um, projected, and we are below what we, um, what we're projecting, so we're right on target. Um, moving on over to our month end. I do have audited financial statements back, and we did end the year, um, with a million 528,847 with, um, ending fund balance. So that's your beginning fund balance in this blue right here. Um, and so that's, that is a solid number for us. And so right at the moment, in November, we are a little bit below, but I think a lot of that has to do with the taxes that I had mentioned before. So our ending fund balance right at the moment, at the end of November, was 3,382,959. Any questions on the general fund?
Is it?
Oh yeah, that's all I got, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. That was short. I tried to keep it nice and short. I don't wanna bore everyone.
All right, old business.
Cover it in your chair.
New business.
Okay.
Get forward to jail.
So as, um, uh, as we all know, Mr. Cahill has chosen to take a retirement life. We are currently in search of a superintendent. Um, so in your pocket, you guys got OSBA, the joint proposal with Oregon School Board Association and rest of leadership, which you guys were afforded the opportunity to see ahead of time. Um, I apologize, I had been calling COSA since before Christmas break, um, and, um, they called me back last night and said, "Well, let us try to put something together." So I apologize for the delay, but here it is, I said, "Go for it." So, they, um, your OSBA is at 7250, priced out according to, um, our ADM. And COSA is looking at 7,500, um, and it details out there in your hard copy what they are on site to do. Now, excuse me, I did ask a few questions here because, uh, COSA has a, um, new superintendent academy, which you'll see there in number 8. And so I had asked Karen about that as far as if we didn't choose to go with, with COSA, because this is kind of a pilot deal for them, um, uh, right at the moment. They're not well, as well-versed as OSBA, um, but OSBA's been doing it for quite a while, but COSA, um, has not, but they've been doing the new superintendent academy. So I did ask her a few questions as far as if we didn't go with theirs, what does the new superintendent academy look like? If, you know, if we pulled maybe a brand-new superintendent, first-year, second-year, kind of a person, um, what's those possibilities? And she said, "Yes, that is a possibility for us, that to participate with that would be a thousand." Um, also, if the new superintendent comes with any diversity, um, there is an additional 2,500 for tuition needs and/or mentoring needs, so there's kind of some benefit to both. Like I said, COSA is kind of a pilot, um, they're not, they would like to get into doing superintendent searches. They do offer the academy for the superintendents. OSBA, on the other hand, has been doing, doing this for a while. Is Steve Kelly affiliated with both, or he is OSBA? OSBA, yeah, yeah.
So, just seeing this, and...
I didn't promise her anything by no means, and she understood completely that she did wanna offer it.
This is their complete package?
Yeah. Yeah, not fully detailed such as, as the OSBA, I think you guys got a lot of information out there. And I think there's probably a little bit more service with OSBA, um, compared to what they, they are putting forward. Steve Kelly's pretty great too. He is, the other highlight that I liked was Cece is in this team, she is from Klamath. So that would be probably a really good resource, um...
With OSBA?
Yeah, she's through OSBA, but she was in Klamath for many years.
You said COSA's just getting into this superintendent searches.
Mm-hmm.
It seems to me that, you know, maybe if we were very visible district somewhere, that it's an ideal spot to live, that maybe it could work.
Find our own anyway.
I mean, when I say ideal spot to live, obviously, we find it ideal, not everybody else. But, um, maybe better to go for the triad and crew. I'm curious what Jack has to think.
I've used, I have used OSBA and had very good luck with them. I've not, I've never used COSA for a superintendent search. When I was on the Jurvis School Board, we used OSBA for our superintendent search, and very, very happy with that.
Any other comments?
Just happy to see the price on both of them. You know, as, you know, government looking for, you know, new town manager, it was considerably more than this for what these, you know, that's probably isn't a good position, so, you know, I guess it looked, both looked fine, but yeah, I think going with the most experienced would make more sense.
Need a motion.
All right.
I move to approve the hire of OSBA for the superintendent search as presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the hire of OSBA, search for superintendent as presented, hold favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Do you need to do anything for a budget?
Oh yeah, I got lots of things to do for the budget. We're gonna wait her out till about April or May, just fix it all at once.
8.2, special meeting work session, January 15th.
Uh, suggested by our board chair that, uh, in order to enhance, uh, the visuals of our buildings in relation to our long-range facilities plan and the possibility of the barn, that we have a special meeting for you folks to tour the buildings and, uh, view what, uh, we've been telling you about firsthand, so. Anyway, we meet here at 5:00, probably caravan over to the high school, middle school area, look it over, then probably caravan on down to the elementary and take a look down there, so. So that's what we're thinking about.
You know, many of our issues at the schools are external. 5:00 PM, it's dark, are we gonna be looking at external?
We will not be on any rooftops.
Very scared.
Take a shovel with you.
I have, and Janet can comment here, the bulk of which can be seen as internal.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important that you guys get inside and look, um, because you can look at, you know, you drive by it, you're, you see it, that part of it maybe not in detail, but I think we need to get inside, we need to see what, what's been, you know, what, what other people are saying, um, you know, corporate strategies and that sort of thing, and, and what, like, our maintenance and that sort of thing goes through. So I think that's the bulk of it, is to be on the inside.
Any questions or thoughts?
Well, it is a special meeting, so you need to make a motion of that thing.
Does it work for him?
I'm gonna try to check my work calendar. I thought I had something at night, I know I have something after noon. I wish we were earlier just to see things in the daylight too, but, um, I'll make my best attempt to do it.
I don't know how it works out after school, like at 3:00 for you folks or anybody.
I think they bumped up early, unfortunately, work's getting...
You could see a little bit of daylight anyway, a minute, or what, whatever you think. I can go, I can do earlier.
Earlier.
Then we don't have to reschedule the booster club meetings again. What time is it at?
Uh, 6:00.
6:00.
We don't wanna do that.
Well, folks are pretty flexible, so if there's any time, we can amend this motion that we've, uh, scummed up right here and change the time, so.
I mean, if we're gonna do it after, we should try to all make it, so.
Yeah.
So do you think of something in the afternoon?
Yeah, I have something at 3:00, I just, I have something at 3:00, so 5:00, 5:00 should be fine. I still think I have something after that, so I can't remember what it is.
How about 4:00 o'clock, is that...
4:00 is fine.
Is 4:00, help a little bit for everybody? Matt helps Cory with booster club.
I can get the booster club.
Are you ready here for booster club? So it's a couple hours, we get through something.
So, if we could get a, a motion with the amendment, uh, for January 15th at 4:00.
Where are we meeting at? We'll be right here, if anyone will tip off.
I move to approve the special meeting work session scheduled for Wednesday, January 15th, 2020, at 4:00 PM as presented.
So moved and seconded to approve the special meeting work session scheduled for Wednesday, January 15th at 4:00 PM as amended, hold favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, very good. Consent agenda.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented, sorry.
Uh, before we, uh, move to approve it, uh, in this consent agenda is the letter of retirement for Superintendent Cahill. Just wanna recognize you will for 40 years of service in the school district, and very much appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So what if, what if we don't approve it, we're gonna go back to the prior one with the OSBA?
We thought you meant this, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
All right. I moved, or it has been moved in, it has been moved to approve the consent agenda as presented and seconded. Hold favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Announcements. Announcements?
Well, it seems like we have lost, uh, many a good educator this year, and it's like, here we go again. I believe it's the third time this year I've come to you to, uh, honor the memory of one of our fine people who was in this district for many years. Former superintendent, he used to sit in this chair, Howard Ottman, uh, passed away on January 3rd, been in an accident, uh, probably some heart problems, was in a coma for about four days, and then passed on on, as I said, probably January 3rd. He, you know, he was originally from Wisconsin, he moved to Oregon as a young man. He, uh, went to Pacific University, and his first job was Lakeview High School as a PE teacher. And he was a PE teacher, I believe, up until probably around 1979 or 80, and it was my guess, then he went off to administration, uh, being a principal or VP over in Mapleton. He was in Bandon, and he climbed up the ladder to superintendent of Culver for a couple of years, and then he came back to Lakeview in 1986, where he stayed here until 1999. As a student, he was a real inspiration to me, and, you know, probably a lot of his influences why I'm in education, along with, I'll throw his name out, too, Ballmer. And, uh, in addition to that, I will impart kind of a funny story. My first day as a freshman coming in from Adel School, you know, in his PE class, we were kind of hidden behind the lockers, and here comes this beaming voice that said, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that." My God, I thought I joined the army. So, I tell him that story time to time again, and get, he used to get quite a kick out of that, so, anyway, but, uh, he inspired a lot of kids. He did some pretty great things for the school district, Daley Field, the football field and track. That was Howard. Howard was behind that project. And, uh, you know, uh, just an excellent taskmaster with his, you know, his people, kind, caring, with the students, kind, caring, and, uh, he will be missed. I've been talking back and forth with the family. I believe there will be a service, put in the next month on a Saturday. They have not set a date yet, so, here's to Howard Ottman and his great work in Lake County Schools for the rest of it.
Thank you. Next board meeting agenda items.
Well, we have a number of things to do. Uh, you asked me for a self-evaluation and kind of a, you know, a calendar or my set of goals for the remainder of the year as far as what to wrap up, you know, in my position here. I have an ASB report, uh, smarter balance report from Karen Counts. Uh, we have to approve annually the Division 22 standards, and then we'll have a, believe it or not, here we, here we go again, we have another round of OSBA policies that we will do in a work session. And, uh, basically, for the time being, that, that's what's on the docket for your meeting next, well, in two weeks, so...
Can I have a question, Barry?
Yeah.
On the smarter balance report, I know we're two weeks away from that. I think I expressed the interest last year, if we could get, if the administration team had an opportunity to maybe put on a piece of paper, just key changes that we made over the years of different, um, curriculum, or, uh, what was it, like, Avid came in this year, um, the different major, um, changes within our schools. I guess I'd like, I mean, we see the trends of what the tests do. I'd like to see if there's ever any correlation to one of these wonderful ideas that we implement that's, we're seeing the benefits in the test. And I think those, those dates are easy to get forgotten about or lost over the years, and it may not be possible in the next couple of weeks, but if we could start capturing that stuff, I think that'd be a good benefit.
Can we roll this up now?
Yeah, please, little priority, there's time.
Okay. adjournment?
I move to adjourn the meeting, second.
So moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Work session is next, and we give...